Okay, six o'clock, we're gonna start our regular meeting tonight. We're gonna review the minutes for February fifteenth that I have here somewhere in my file. So, motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll second.
Okay, discussion on the minutes for the meeting?
Um, there was a cemetery, uh, concern, so the account was switched from the Wells River to Community. Um, I think the draft minutes, it said that that was done at this meeting.
Yep.
That, but it was done after the meeting, and I think the current set of minutes.
Prefer, yeah, I got change.
Yeah.
Okay, good change. Okay, that's good. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, looks good to me. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, minutes approved for February fifteenth meeting. Adjustments to the agenda, do we have any tonight?
I think so.
Okay, good, we'll move along. So, department updates, highway is first, um, and Harold is here.
I am.
So, we'll take, we'll do that.
You all have it, huh? I jumped the COVID page first.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that first, absolutely.
Um, so there's a little confusion.
Okay.
Um, in the paper, it's listed, you know, they, you know, I ran it out.
Okay.
So, it says, the number two on the back, that the employer would be paid all regular time pay. I just assumed that that meant regular time pay, so that when Philip worked Friday overtime, it was overtime, I didn't understand.
Okay.
That it was sick time.
Okay.
Basically, not regular time.
Correct. Right, which is right here in the policy. It says right here for overtime, it says, uh, overtime, time off in accordance with the federal affair labor standards, it says that sick time, invitation time, days do not count as hours' work for purpose of calculating overtime.
But it says regular time here.
And I think, so we, so it's sick time. Yeah, so I think, I think the board can change the wording on that COVID policy to make it more clear, so.
I think, as I, as I looked it over, that what, what was, what my understanding of what it is, and I think we'll, we'll clarify, is by regular time, we meant.
Regular sick.
Your ra, your regular rate of pay, not.
Right.
Less than your regular.
And it was brought to our attention from Lisa, because Lisa was checking in, like, I don't know, I didn't, I don't, I don't understand, so that's why the board got involved in it and whatever, so. Are we good on that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
I think it's pretty agreeable. I gotta get some cutting edges for this truck.
Okay.
I think I put it in update.
Yeah.
Um, so I got a price, uh, approximate price, he didn't have his price list right in front of it, so a set of car buys with cover plates, nine hundred bucks.
Okay.
So that's obviously over my limit, so I need more.
What are they called, Harold? I'm sorry.
Cutting edges.
Is that for the wing and the plow, or is that just, just the plow?
They've gone insane.
Yeah.
The one I like, the cutting edges I like, that lasted probably three years on this truck.
Okay.
All you get them are sixteen hundred bucks.
Okay, but, okay, but so, where compared to pricing, does it, is it better or worse?
Well, overtime is probably worse. I mean, the most expensive ones last probably twice as long as the others.
Okay.
So, eighteen hundred bucks compared to sixteen hundred bucks.
Well, that doesn't seem like that big a difference between sixteen and eighteen, it's a couple hundred bucks.
Right.
And they last twice as long.
But, so, I'm fine with just the regular cutting edges with the cover plate, just the car buys, the cover plate, just to get us through a year and a half, or whatever it is, and.
My opinion is, if we could buy something for a few hundred dollars more and it lasts twice as good, why would we go that route?
Seven hundred dollars more.
Okay, but.
This shot, overtime, they'd be cheaper.
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking, like, i- if you got, if you've got space within your budget.
I mean, that's questionable.
Well, that's, well, that's, yeah, how is your budget doing it?
Well, but I think, one of the, well, I think that's the, kind of, one of the things that we have to be, kind of cognizant of, and, not that I want to push it off, but I think it may be worthwhile to push off until the budget's approved next week.
Well, I'm, yeah, I mean, I think we should go with the nine hundred dollars ones.
Okay.
Just because.
It's your department, your call, so.
It's very hard.
Not really, we, you oversee the highway, so.
But with the breakdowns and stuff we had already this year.
Okay.
I think it's a safe back to.
So, did I give approval with the, with the cutting edges?
Um, so our loader had a malfunction the other day.
Okay.
So, we'll be getting the bill from John Deere. There's a little electronic valve in there for the heater for the death fluid.
Okay.
That stopped open, so it was overheating the death fluid.
Okay.
Of course, it's got the whole satellite tracking system.
Okay, what is the deal on that? We, how old is that bucket loader?
Well, it's over a year old now, it's a twenty-one.
Okay, so is it covered?
Yeah, the part's under warranty.
With the labor, so?
But that's not, if we take it over there.
Really? Okay.
But anyway, I mean.
Jesus.
So, we have to pay it in a service call, basically.
Yep, okay. No, I know, it's just, whatever.
I mean, I'll say John Deere kind of is a cat.
Okay.
Cat will carry it, even though Jason is coming from right gate coming by, they charge him the dealership.
Right.
John Deere, they actually carry it from current holder.
Okay.
So, it's, they're actually.
That's fine, I'm not, I'm just.
It's frustrating.
No, yeah. I mean, how many people call their bucket loader back to get it worked on? They usually need somebody to come and do the job.
Put a sixty dollar package.
It was the same with the, with the price of gas that's working with the service call.
Right.
You don't have that much of gas to go over there, to take it over there than it is to just have to come do the service call.
Right, um, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah, it was a ten minute fix.
Yeah.
So, um, my truck, I have ordered a pit lane module for it.
Okay.
One hell of it.
Okay.
I'm still waiting on it, spent almost two weeks, of course, like any computer thing, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, it's running, we got.
Yeah.
Bypass what we need to do to get it going, so.
Okay.
It's all I got.
Okay, good, thank you. I know you've been busy, we appreciate it.
Gearbox with Sander, that was all squared away, and.
Yeah, that gearbox worked perfect, and it's working perfect again.
Okay. Good.
Everything at six hundred bucks.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think it's only gonna get worse, so, it's the way it goes. The other price of new garage door for a garage is like eight, ten thousand dollars, and you can't get one.
Can't get one.
Well, you gotta order it months ahead of time just to get these things, so. Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Treasure.
Okay, um, I handed out budgets, I think they're in the green folder if you don't have them. So, all departments got, um, budgets, there should be about sixteen percent in. Um, so I just wanted to review, were, are we going back to hand out the budgets the first of the meeting, and then on the second select board meeting, that's when we review if any questions or concerns, or did you want to change that up?
Um, no, that's fine, I feel like if there's any red flags, you could bring it to our attention too, in, in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, something that's, sticks out.
Okay. I spoke with, um, Nate, and, um, he spoke with Gavin Reed.
Okay.
About, um, the Mill Street, and it's been determined that it's a three-rod road.
Okay.
So Nate will prepare two to three construction easements exhibits, and Gavin will draft the language.
Okay.
Um, we've received Zach and I.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've seen it today.
Yes, this afternoon, yeah.
Received several emails from Sean at USDA. I have not had a chance to review what they are, but.
He sent, um, their compliance, they have a compliance checklist to make sure that we're compliant with all of their stuff, so that was one, and, so there's a checklist of things. Um, and then he also sent over two documents, um, one of which will have to go to Gavin to be reviewed. Um, but, I, I think, uh, you know, we can just confirm what it is.
Okay.
But it's just another, another check on the list that we gotta, we gotta fill in.
Um, so the town reports were, um, received around, uh, February twenty-second by the community, um, and the PDF for the town report was put on the website, I think it just got to us yesterday, so we put that on the website. Um, last time I spoke, um, I was working on the VLCT workers' comp audit, and I have that all done, sent it out. Um, yesterday was VLCT lunch hour training, it was about an hour. Um, I don't know if anybody, um, zoomed in on it or all, it was on Zoom, and, um, you could do it by phone, it was from twelve to one. It was, it was pretty interesting, just gave some tidbits on other people's questions, and how a meeting should go, and how you amend, and, and things like that.
Okay.
Um, we have a, um, training tomorrow with Vermont Pie with NIMRIC, the system, how to print the taxes, that's tomorrow, um, I think it's only an hour long. Um, and just a reminder that next select board meeting will be after town meeting, so that will be a big meeting as far as the appointments. I'll try to have it all written out like we've done in the past, and get the letters ready.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I'll, I think, well, Lisa, I think you have it, or, or Carrie has it, but we have, we put together a list of all of the appointments.
Okay.
Terms, all of that stuff, so we, we can just go through that. That'll hopefully be a little bit more efficient.
Yeah, easier, yeah.
For those appointments.
And that's it, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Carrie, she had to be on a game tonight, I guess, so she's not here, but she left, she left her report for us. Uh, she says working on audit lists for, with Lisa, thirty-eight reports, info that the new audit firm needs by April first to complete the town audit. Uh, one liquor license, one tobacco license, one tobacco submit.
Substitute.
Substitute endorsement permit, all the Upper Valley Grill need to approve by select board, included, we have it here.
Oh, you, you have it.
It's here on this sheet.
Oh, you have it, okay.
We have to sign it, yeah.
Gotcha.
Included, once select board approves after town, receives the fee, I will go in and approve licenses, and the new online liquor licensing portal through the state, which is cool. The way she puts it is I just go in and push a button.
Yeah.
So.
So, do you want me to make, do we just want to vote on that, then?
Uh, yeah.
So, I'll make a, yeah, I'll just make a motion to approve the liquor license, tobacco license, the tobacco substitute endorsement permit for the Upper Valley Grill, second.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh, just, I mean, this is a new process, like, now it's, you know, uh, um, from what Carrie talked about a few meetings ago, but basically, we're, um, it's, you know, we, we as a select board approve them verbally, and then it goes in the minutes, but, um, it's all done online through their re-licensing portal, so that it's completed by the town board.
Okay, good, um, I guess all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's approved, I don't see any place to sign it.
No, we don't, yeah, she put that in notes, we don't need to sign it.
She did say that. I hadn't gotten there yet. Verbally approved, okay, no place to sign. Uh, dog licensing is trickling in at twenty-three, I think we were twelve at the last meeting, I don't know.
Gained it on that.
How many dogs?
We got, is it two hundred? Uh, we got till the first of April to get that done, so.
Yeah, of course. Uh, there is a new VLCT municipal access portal starting, oh, that's, we read it.
I got a letter here, so I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just cover it real quick. Uh, basically, um, uh, on March eighth, um, members of the municipal will receive an email, um, with a link to a survey, the survey is to update all of the information that needs to be done by, um, the seventeenth of March. Basically, by March thirtieth, it's a, it's an online municipal access portal, um, so it's a secure login site for, um, town municipal officers to sign in and, uh, review and have resources available, so, um, that's for VLCT, and I'm assuming that that is gonna include, you know, some of the, what we, what we use VLCT in the past for, will be available resources specifically for, um, you know, municipal officers.
Right.
Which we're gonna set up.
I think, having read it, like, at first they go to send something to Carrie, and then Carrie sends them a list, and then, like, by the end of March, I think, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, they send something to us.
Yeah, the survey is just to update your contact information, email addresses and all that, so that they can set the, uh, set the login up properly, it seems like.
Right, she said she would, uh, update all the stuff by March eighth, everyone will get a new login, credentials, start using the site, um, so that's good.
Did you get a copy?
I did.
Okay. And I'll hold on with this one.
One has your name.
Well, that has my name, and I'll hold on with that one.
Uh, the end of March, uh, there will be three in-person seminars about the new VTPIE for Vermont Pie, I guess, VTPIE, tax billing process. This new prog, uh, process, uh, will go into effect this summer, generating twenty-twenty-three tax bills. A reminder, town meeting day is Tuesday, March seventh, ten AM. Uh, voting at BMU school budget will be by ballot, ten AM to seven PM. Rabies Clinic is Wednesday, March eighth, six to seven PM, at the Highway Garage. Thanks, Carrie.
Um, Lisa, I don't know if Carrie mentioned it, is she planning on being here on the eighth during that timeframe to do license at the same time?
I believe so, yes, she'll be here.
Yeah, 'cause I know we, we did that in previous years, so, if anybody goes to the Randy's Clinic and wants to come right up here and get their license at the same time, they can do it and knock it out, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right, excellent. Assistant assessor?
Um, I did a training last week from Vermont Pie on, um, home sets. They were supposed to be, be downloading the home sets today so you could start, and I emailed them, 'cause at one o'clock I couldn't get on, and it wasn't actually, they're still working on it, but hopefully, home sets are gonna be soon, so I can go in and load those from this year, and then current use, they had some current use training, um, and Johnny attending that, they're doing them, it's like an hour or so, and they're doing them like two or three a week for everybody gets through. Um, other than that, I've been busy trying to work on building permits, getting them up to date, and getting cards changed before April first, and then also, um, property transfers, getting, keeping them up to date.
Okay, good.
Everything's validated with, um, for, um, with Vermont Pie on that, on that system, for the equalization step, and that's a new system, and so I've got those all updated for the ones that I'm.
Okay, good, excellent. That's it.
That's it.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thanks, Dorothy.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question about the, the building permits. Is it possible to, um, have those put on the website? The reason being is, um, the permits, once they get, um, received here at the office, they get put out on board in the foyer, um, but people don't stop and see them, people don't have a chance to see what's up there for what's coming in for permits. Is there a problem with that on the website?
You mean, like, the, the completed, the copy of the completed?
Correct.
I don't know about the legality of that.
We'd have to look, we'd have to look into that, and.
I would think.
I think from a logistics.
Without going into the detail of the site stuff, but just to show, at least to show that, um, you know, Lee Schalberg has put in a, has submitted a permit to add on to or do whatever, to have a chance for other people to be aware of that, the neighbors, for instance.
But usually, a neighbor would be, is contacted when you submit a permit, anyone at least.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think.
I don't know that.
We just need to look into the, making sure that we're able to do it that way. I don't see an issue with that, I think, you know, it's, it's public record anyway, so it's just a matter of, you know, for the convenience of, of keeping a database of permits, how long do we have to keep them posted, that kind of thing, are we, are we gonna have a?
Who's gonna regulate it, too?
Yeah, that's the other thing, who, who from the towns, so we, I think there's some things that we have to figure out to make sure that that's, but I don't see that it's not.
Well, Carrie records are correct, as I understand Carrie is wanting to report some when they come in.
I do believe so, yeah, it's not Dan, so it's not me.
And maybe she could put them on at that point in time. Anyway, something that, uh, I've been meaning to ask for quite some time, and, um, a lot, I mean, we don't know of a lot of things that are going on, and we don't even know what not to go on each town, and, um, I think it's just something that should be on the website and available for.
Okay.
If we.
I think, I think we can look into the, all of the details, how that works, and, and, you know, we can research that for sure, and see if it's something we can do or not.
Okay, thank you.
Fire and fast, I have an update from Brenda for fast. Um, do you have anything for fire here?
Well, there was the, uh, discussion last meeting about, uh, cheese pager.
Oh, yeah.
And where it needed to be put, so I talked to him, and he said he didn't have anywhere else to put it. Take that line item out, because the year before, he had a line item for radios and pagers in his forest fire, and the select board rightfully told him, you don't need that line item anymore, because you can take that out of your capital, thinking it was for replacing radios and pagers, you know, like, so, the reason he put it in supplies is because the year before, he had that under radios and pagers, so I told him, maybe next year, two, twenty-two-three budget cycle, you wanna put a new line item on that are the fire and fa, the forest fire warden for his alphanumeric pager, or something.
And that's just for the.
That's just for his alphanumeric pager, yeah.
That's not for the actual, that's for the service.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I got you.
So.
Okay.
So that was, that was that mystery.
Wouldn't that go under the fire department, not the town, not the Forest Fire?
I don't.
I think he has, well, I think what the discussion we had before was that he has a separate one from the forest fire.
Right.
For the fu, for the fire, forest fire warden, I don't know if that's the case or not.
I'm not sure, Dor, yeah, I'm not, so.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Just clarify, if there's a separate pager, then, I mean, yeah, if there's.
Right.
If the chief has a pager, right, if it's the chief's pager.
Yes, it's, yes.
That should fall under the fire department, not necessarily the forest fire.
Doesn't Fast Squad have one, too?
I do believe they do, yeah.
So where does that one, that one falls under the Fast Squad, right?
It's gonna be coming out of somebody's.
But is that a regular pager? That's a regular pager?
It's like an, like a business pager.
And so, you have one.
Philip has one. Philip has, I think the town, yeah.
Yeah, right, right, and the Fast Squad has one, too?
I think the town's got four of them. Does that sound right, Philip?
And it comes out of each department's thing?
Yeah.
All right.
It's just a contracted fee, right, back up, yeah.
So, so I think we just have to figure it out.
If we've got it all over the place, maybe what we should do.
Just have a pager budget.
Or, well, let's have, I mean.
Look it out of the budget because of the durable equipment.
Yeah, but not the service fees, we, we didn't talk about that.
But it's radio pager, I mean, if you take that line item out, because you.
It's like communications, it's like a telephone, or whatever.
We've got a telephone and internet line.
So wouldn't it follow through the same thing as telephone and internet, 'cause it's a.
I would put it on, I mean, next year, that's where I would lump it. As a select board member, that's where I would put it.
I would say, maybe what, what we have is a line, 'cause it's not just the forest fire, it's not just the chief, it's the Fast Squad, it's, maybe it's just a line under emergency services, and it just goes with, I mean, there's already a telephone internet line there.
Yeah.
Maybe you lump it into there, and you just make sure that it's covered, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Covered in a certain.
I see the issue is whose budget, what, what, where does it come out of someone's budget, if you put on emergency services?
Yeah, well, but I mean, it, that way, it simplifies, it covers everybody, and that's why my.
Well, like, the, the concern was, Wade didn't have anywhere else, the fire, forest fire warden didn't have any, didn't feel he had anywhere, any other budget line to take it out of, so he took it out of the supplies, and he only had a hundred dollars budgeted in his supply line, and his one hundred and forty-four for the, so, like, he didn't know where else to.
I think that's fine.
It should be in communications, it just falls under.
And I, I think it's funny where it is for now, I think it's just, maybe like you said, moving forward, let's make sure we know where we're lumping the.
Yeah.
Those service fees into, if it's a service fee for the year for his pager.
I, which I believe is what it is.
And you've got multiple pagers in the town that are part of that, I personally think that falls under emergency services, because it's all part of the emergency services communication.
Now, isn't the hundred and forty dollars for four pagers?
I would, would, I mean.
I don't know.
Oh, this?
I'm not sure.
I looked at it, and I saw that.
Well, you have the budget, what's mine under highway or radio pagers?
It's over.
Probably.
Two eighty-nine twenty.
Okay, so that, yeah, so that would be all pagers.
That would be two pages, right?
Yeah, two pages, okay. It's not complicated, is it? Okay.
I don't think it's.
It's not a big deal.
It's just a matter of accounting for it in the right spot in the budget, that's what it comes down to, it's, it's only a hundred and forty-four dollars out of.
So, in my office, it's very simple, that all goes in this thing, and it comes out of the thing. Okay, so anyways, uh, Grand Fast Squad, is that it?
That, that's all I had, and that, that was to clear, that was to clear things up, Tristan.
Thank you. Um, anyways, uh, so Brenda sent, uh, an email, 'cause we were requesting departments to send a monthly update. She says, uh, number of EMS calls are down slightly from last year, twenty-one calls for two thousand and twenty-three, and, uh, twenty-five, uh, by this date for two thousand and twenty-two, so, a little bit, so that's good. We offer our first, uh, hands-on CPR session at Blue Mountain last Monday, the thirteenth. Um, typical CPR certification session takes between five and six hours with hands. Only CPR, we're teaching people how to quickly recognize, um, cardiac arrest, and how to do chest compressions, virtual components in the process that is CPR. Todd Powers at BMU gave us free ballgame tickets to hand out to those that attended.
Jesus.
Um, so, we had four people go through our station, although the number may seem low, that's four more chances that a life could be saved, so that's good. We currently have two department members going through EMT training, reports up to today's date are positive, and both students are doing well. Thanks, Brenda, so.
Agreed. Thanks, thanks to Brenda for sending us a report that's.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Constable?
Everything's been quiet since the last meeting, other than I heard from Brent that somebody was down in the town pit across the river, blowing donuts and.
Like the old stump dump down below there, or? Oh, the helipad, yeah, okay.
Blowing donuts and blowing ruts in the ground. I'd heard it was a white Dodge, no idea who it could have been.
It seems to be a regular thing, if it isn't the Rygate Ball Field or somewhere else.
Or run up and down the.
Rail trail.
Rail trail, yeah.
They, they really tore it, it got soft down there, and they tore it up.
Okay.
So, now the plow, really, it's nothing we can do about it now, because it froze back up.
I guess.
If we can find, you know, if we catch them in that process.
Right.
My thing down there especially, 'cause you said it's the, it's the helicopter landing zone, that makes it challenging for, you know, if we actually need to have a helicopter land for an emergency, that can make it challenging, and all that.
Swallow flowers are hard.
I guess we just have to keep our eyes open, and hopefully somebody sees something if it happens again, or whatever, I don't know.
Yep.
Okay.
As far as dogs are, and I haven't heard any more complaints.
Okay.
The dogs, um, rare and treat, so.
All is good.
All is good.
Okay, you were working, you were going to work with Dan on something or something, something, weren't you? Were you, were you, or you were going to work?
We're going to work with him, yeah, we're going to work on the speed sign stuff.
Oh, that's right.
Going to get around to it eventually.
Okay.
I didn't, did, I don't know if you got a chance to reach out to the sheriff's department, I haven't.
No, I have not.
I'm going to try to get a request in, uh, probably tomorrow, I'll do it tomorrow, see if we can get the, the temporary signs down. At some point, see if they can actually put that into motion, although I know that they said that they would be able to do that. Since we've signed that contract, they haven't been down here, so it'd be kind of nice if they do that, uh, and then, what we're, a couple of things to follow up to are the speed study with the sheriff's.
Right.
See if they're able to do that for us, to submit that application, so.
Okay, good, uh, okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Uh, anything with the library? Lisa, any, you haven't heard anything, okay?
No, I think she's having some events throughout lots of times.
They had an event today, and my kids brought home a bracelet for them, so.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay, cool.
It's a Bulgarian tradition.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, now it's a grown. Okay.
They got a lot of really great events going on, it's, you know, it's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, good. Zoning administrator, well, she was here, but he didn't even, he didn't give us any report, so.
Um, I guess to go along with, Lisa had mentioned that next meeting we'll be making appointments, I guess we could note at this meeting that we got a recommendation from the planning commission, I don't know, to appoint Dan Webster as the zoning administrator.
We did.
So, I guess we'll just note that in this meeting and.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
Yep.
It's my intention to appoint him as the zoning administrator.
Absolutely. Definitely, yep, good, I almost forgot about that, good call, Aaron. Okay, um, health officer.
Uh, just, I, I'll say, I know Dan, you, well, I know you talked to Dan, and there were some concerns brought up about.
Residents.
Residents in town, and then we're still waiting to hear as to whether, we've got approval to investigate that, um, concern about septic system that may be dragging into a brug, so.
Correct.
We'll be following, we'll be following that, hopefully following up on that there soon.
Yep, definitely, okay, maintenance, anything? Okay, that's good, IT? All good, okay, planning commission.
So, uh, as probably everybody's aware, we had a meeting before this meeting, public comment session for the new, um, zoning bylaws, which are now going to go through, um, to the state for approval and for filing, and to the regional zoning commission for filing, or planning commission, so.
Probably worth noting at this meeting that, uh, the select board's very pleased with the work, the planning commission, we said it at the last meeting, but at this meeting, with, select board's very pleased with the work that the planning commission has done, and I'm doubting the.
It worked with Dan, our zoning administrator, and he's brought up stuff, and.
Everything's been, everything's been real good, so.
So it's great, great working together. Okay, uh, NEK, CUD, VORAC, update, anything?
So I, I know that, um, they're planning to have tables at, um, with information about what's kind of going on within the CUD, as well as the VORAC grant stuff, um, at town meeting day, so they'll, they'll have, um, information for anybody that comes to town meeting, um, which will be really good, um, so, then I think.
And, and Mike Namie has sent me the paperwork for the ACH for reimbursement.
Okay, perfect.
So I got that filled out, and he has it.
Awesome.
Okay, good, anything else on any of those things? Infrastructure project update, updates?
Just that we're continuing to get communication back and forth from Sean at USDA and Nate, and, uh, it's moving forward, um, I think we're, you know, as Lisa mentioned, um, working on easements on Hill Street.
Right.
And, uh, you know, still waiting on the, you know, historic preservation stuff, which is not going to hold us up from getting it out the bid, but I think we're still waiting for the final go-ahead that we can put that out to bid.
Right, which we were hoping sooner than later, because bidding season's upon us, so, see what happens.
Yep, there, there is a good chance that we can get it out the bid and potentially break ground this year, if we're lucky.
Right, okay, good. Open to the public, other business. Mark.
Um, I had a gentleman call me today and ask if I was able to do, um, VIN verifications.
Okay.
Jim was able to do that, I don't know if I can do that.
I don't, I don't know if you need, uh, constable, like, I don't know, law enforcement.
I don't know if that falls within law enforcement authority or not.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know the answer.
But we can find out the answer, okay?
I, I just told him that, we had a meeting tonight, and I'll bring it up.
Okay, yeah, we'll do some research and find out what the deal is on that.
Got that select board book, it might be in there, if not, you can call, I'm sure we can call Trevor Whipple at the P C.
Let's find out, yeah, we'll do some research and get back to an answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for open to the business? Open to the business, open to public.
I have one thing.
Okay.
That, um, Carrie is running for town clerk, and she's running for delinquent tax.
Yes.
On Tuesday, and I just wanted to point out that she's done a wonderful job in both positions, and when we both arrived here several years ago in two thousand fifteen, the delinquent tax was a mess, they weren't reconciling with, um.
It's the lowest it's ever been now, is it?
Yeah, and now Carrie has set up programs to work with the individuals who are delinquent, and she sets up payment plans, she's consistent, she, um, works with all of them, and it's the lowest it's ever been, so I just, um, you know, hope that, to put a good word out for all the good work that she has done.
Absolutely, yeah.
I don't know if anybody's running against Carrie, but she's done a good job as town clerk.
Absolutely, yeah, she does a wonderful job. She, she, yeah, puts a lot of time into the town and cares about the town, so, which is really nice and important, absolutely. Anything else for open to public, please?
And I, I just want to, once again, the application on the wages, um, the, I noticed that the, in the town report that it says, um, just the gross wages for employees, so I, I, I need just for a breakdown, um, for instance, I'm just going to choose the town clerk's position.
So the wages are exactly the same as they were last year, there's no raises, all we're doing this year is an eight point seven cost of living increase, so, nothing, we haven't adjusted the wages at all.
And the wage paid that you all signed was.
Right, we haven't changed anything.
Yeah, but the way, the cost of the eight point seven percent cost of living raise increases the.
Right, but we didn't adjust, you just add eight point seven to the cost of living, to the wages.
To the, to the hour of the wage times the number of hours worked.
Right.
For the year, is what equals the gross wage.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and, I mean, I have some clarity for that, the town clerk, um, is wage, I mean, for Carrie, because she's both the town clerk and delinquent tax, and she's the assistant treasurer, that, you know, it adds up differently for, for those extra appointed taxes, or elected.
Right, and we chose to go with that, because that's what the state, that's what the increase was, and so that's why we did that.
Okay, no, I, I understand that, um, then, um, I do understand that, um, there was a change in the plan for the health insurance, uh, whereby, um, the employee will be paying fifteen percent.
Instead of ten, yes.
Correct.
That was a negotiation that we talked about to help the budget and, and, um.
Any idea, any idea roughly how much the premium, um, amount is that the, uh, the employee pays?
I'd have to look back, I don't know, this was, it's, yeah, I'd have to look back, I don't.
Fifteen percent, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what it is.
I do, it should, should be noted, I do believe that fifteen, going up that five percent was brought to us by the town employees too.
That's true, yeah.
I think that was something that we brought to them, that was something that they brought to us to, to help with it, so, should be noted.
Um, and there's no mention of a health reimbursement account in the town report, as being a part of their health insurance benefit. I understand that there is four thousand dollars per, um, individual who has the health insurance with the, the town that is having four thousand dollars put into this account?
I know, I, I believe that's correct, I think that's how we, but I think it's all part of the premium. So I, I think that all falls in the budget, I believe it falls under the health insurance budget line.
Health insurance has H R A, the dental division.
Correct.
And a blue cross portion.
But last year was an HSA, and this year's an H R A?
No, it's H R A.
Yeah.
HSA was probably fifteen years ago, twelve years ago.
But that's gone up to four thousand dollars per?
I don't know, I don't know.
The plan changed, so that the amount changed.
Correct, and I think we discussed that.
Went to a lower plan, and that made the H R A increase.
So what, what plan did the, did the town choose under Blue Cross membership?
We didn't go with the top plan, we actually.
I, I have, again, I have that right here in front of me.
They used to have the platinum plan, I don't know.
We don't, that's not the case anymore.
So we have a new budget day?
That's not gold.
Gold, yeah.
C D H P, it comes to mind, they call it the C D H P.
Yeah, we, we, that was also part of the negotiation, was, was a lower, a lower plan plus the change in the percentage to which the employee.
Because health insurance has gone up so much, so much.
Correct.
Which means it was a little less than it was if we stuck to the way it was.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, so, speed signs, we already talked about, uh, fire alarm link, building together, alarm protection covers that, Aaron. And it's on there just for a reminder.
I don't have anything bring before the board, um, so you guys know I have been in contact with a couple different companies, so I mean, there is stuff going on there, but I don't have any numbers to bring before anybody, so.
All right, sounds good.
When you got numbers, you can bring them.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. I think, I think you guys will probably know it's coming closer, because there'll be like people looking around the building.
Okay, all right, thanks, Aaron, set agenda for next meeting.
I mean, I think we usually do appointments.
Yeah, appointments are a really big thing.
Okay.
And I would, um, my, my suggestion, because appointments takes a lot of time to do, that